Good afternoon and welcome to this public hearing of Columbus City Council's Finance Committee. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson and I'm Chair of the committee. Before we begin, please be aware that this afternoon's hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, Columbus's Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. The subject of this afternoon's hearing is the city's second quarter financial review. Finance Department Director Paul Rakowski will review our financial position through the second quarter of 2015. The second quarter is an important financial review because this review provides better perspective than the first quarter on what the city can anticipate, especially as we gear up for the third quarter and the mayor's budget proposal which will occur in November. As we consider our current financial position, it is important to mention that Columbus is one of the best managed cities in the entire country. We continue to be the largest city in America to receive a AAA bond rating from the three major credit rating agencies. We have streamlined their operation of our government and as a result are on pace to save as much as $260 million for the taxpayers by 2019. We are on track to have set aside $75 million in our rainy day fund within five years. In review of the second quarter report, I can say we continue to be well positioned financially. The city appears to be on track with the auditor's projected income tax collection. In addition, delays in filling vacancies have assisted in spending less than the original 2015 appropriation. I will now bring up Director Rakowski to give an in-depth review of the second quarter. He will share information about the city's continued controls on hiring and expenditures that will allow us to once again spend less than we had originally budgeted. Director Rakowski, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chair Tyson. It's nice to be here today to go over the second quarter review for 2015. As I do each time we get together, I'll provide some general comments about the purpose of the review and you've hit on some of those statements, but I'll go through those fairly quickly. But as you know, the purpose of our review is on a quarterly basis, the Finance and Management Department, in conjunction with the other departments, we examine the projected financial condition of the city for the remainder of the year. And we do that based on a review of revenues and expenditures to date for all the departments and offices. And then we also work with the departments to look at projections for the rest of year spending. And although we tend to focus on the general fund as we do even in the operating budget presentation because it houses many of the major activities and services provided by the city such as police and fire services, refuse collection, code enforcement, many economic development activities, the review does include an analysis of all of the major operating funds and that includes the enterprise funds which are the Department of Utilities, water, sewer, storm, and the electricity division, as well as revenue funds, the street construction maintenance and repair fund, the health revenue fund, the recreation and parks revenue funds, as well as internal service. Those are the funds like in the fleet division where we bill other departments for services that the fleet division provides. That also is what we do in regard to our technology services. We have a centralized technology department that bills other departments for those services. And then we also include an analysis of our large federal grant, the Community Development Block Grant, which is spread across multiple departments and divisions. And as you mentioned in your opening statement, as we go along in the year in regard to our quarterly reviews, they get a little bit more predictive. This review is a little bit more predictive than the first quarter review, but obviously it's not as important or as accurate as the third quarter review. And that's the review that we base the following year's budget upon, especially that carryover number that we then go build into the available resources for the following year's budget. But it is important because it assures that we're staying on the right track, that we're staying on budget. And if not, when we do have a whole another half of year, we have the ability to make adjustments that will have some kind of meaningful impact on the bottom line by the time we get to the end of the year. In regard to the general fund, we continue to improve our position in the general fund. We now project that we'll expend $805 million. That's 8.9 million less than the original appropriation. This represents an increase of 4.5 million since the first quarter, which we at that time projected about $4 million in saving. As always, we hope this number continues to increase in the second half of the year as we build towards the 2016 budget. Table A, which is up on the screen currently, that reflects the fiscal position of the general fund. As you know, an important factor that I've already mentioned several times is that carryover number that's on this chart of 29.2 million. All of that was built in to the 2015 budget. So that's why it's so important for us to continue to produce carryover through additional revenue and savings each year as we move into the next year's budget. The other charts that are a part of Table A, I won't spend a lot of time on those. Those haven't changed since the first quarter and they're not going to change through the rest of the year. One is our rainy day fund or the Economic Stabilization Fund, $66.9 million projected ending balance. As you mentioned, we're ahead of schedule in meeting our end of year 2018 goal of 75 million. It was a $2.2 million deposit in 2015 and we'll continue those deposits until we reach that goal. The anticipated expenditure fund or what we call here internally the 27th pay period fund, obviously with leap years that occur, there is an anomaly where there's a 27th pay period occasionally and we don't wait to address that until the year that occurs. We build up a fund in order to pay that off when that does come due. That's projected to have a $15.4 million year-end balance. That will be encumbered in 2016, the amount that we need for that 27th pay period, but because of the way that this works, it won't be paid out until 2020. That's when we'll actually, we always want to encumber that when the expense is realized, but then we'll not have to pay that out until 2020. And the final fund that is listed here is the Basic City Services Fund. You know, we created this in 2002 with an $11 million deposit. We did this because we knew that there would be continued state cuts and continued pressure on the budget and we, when we have additional money that we know that we will likely need to spend, unlike our rainy day fund, which we don't want to spend until we're really in a situation where we have no other option. We had always expected to have expenditures out of this fund and to spend the money that was in there. The balance in this fund will likely be needed in the 2016 operating budget. If we don't need that, obviously we'll leave what we can within the fund for a future year. We did use 5.7 million when we put the 2015 operating budget together. And as you know, this has largely been funded outside of the interest earnings with the workers' compensation rebates that we've received from the state from the good practices that we have in regard to our workers' compensation program. As we look at revenue, this chart compares 2014 with 2015, both as of the end of June in each year, as well as the 2014 year-end actuals and the 2015 year-end estimate, the auditor's estimate for the current year. And as I point out on this chart, and I'll expand it a little bit to provide a little bit more detail, really the two big takeaways from this are, number one, it's the reliance on the income tax as this large, very large source of revenue for our general fund and the resources that are within the general fund. And then the second point is that really the generally flat nature of all of the other major categories of revenue. I will say that we've seen a pickup this year, which is a good thing, in a couple other categories. As you know, we've implemented a couple of fee changes and some other changes last year for this year's budget and those have paid a little bit of dividends. So we hope to continue to see some growth in interest earnings as the economy continues to recover. At one point, when the interest rates do get raised by the Fed, we'll see growth in that revenue source as well. Income tax importantly was at 3.8% over 2014 for the same period, which is very good. That was the collections at the end of June. The auditor's estimate was 3%. So anytime we're above that estimate, we're doing well. Currently, that estimate is even a little bit higher. It's over 4% and we hope that that continues for the rest of the year. As we talk about expenditures, we really see continuation in the trends that we saw in the first quarter. We continue, as I said, to be in a positive position within the general fund as of the end of the second quarter. We don't really see any significant problems or deficits in any general fund departments, divisions, or offices. And we, as I said earlier, currently project savings of about 8.9 million. And the bulk of those savings, they really continue to come from four departments as they were in the first quarter, which are really four of our larger departments where a lot of our expenses are housed. The first being public safety within the director's office. We have an overall surplus within the director's office of 587,000. It's really due to a couple of very distinct factors. One is the filling of two vacant budgeted positions, which is about 238,000 of that total. And then we have savings again within the jail contract. And as the year goes on, if we continue to see the fact that we're not spending as much on that jail contract, we'll increase that number, that savings number. We are seeing a trend where there are less jail days that we're having to pay for. As you know, the court has been doing other alternative sentencing down at the court and alternative courts that they're running mainly through the help of city council that you provided funding for some of those courts, the Veterans Court and the Catch Court. And I think that's helping prevent unnecessary jail, jail days and stays that we would have to pay for. Support Services Division within the Safety Department, again, delays in hiring and some savings in supplies and fleet maintenance charges. And you'll see that throughout the other large departments that obviously with the price of fuel, that we have had savings in regard to our fleet budget in some of the departments that consume significant amounts of fuel because our, the gas prices are very, very low right now and lower than what we had projected at the beginning of the year. So those savings in fleet and supplies and the delays in hiring, there's a projected savings of about a little over 64,000 in support services. In the Fire Division, we see savings of over $1 million that we're currently projecting. It's really the result of savings in sworn wages and associated benefits. And this is due to greater than anticipated retirements that we've seen in the first half of the year. And again, obviously they're a big user of fuel over in the Fire Division, so we're also seeing savings from fleet. The police and within the police division, it's really very similar to the Fire Division where we are seeing savings due to greater than anticipated retirements in our sworn salaries, as well as seeing some savings in sworn overtime. And again, lower fleet maintenance and helicopter fuel costs. As you know, we're in the process of changing out and switching out to a different engine in our helicopters. So some of those helicopters have been grounded this year. We're still providing adequate coverage, but we're not running as many helicopters. So we're seeing some fuel savings and as well as the fact that even helicopter, the jet fuel we use over there has been lower in price than we would have anticipated. All of that is resulting in savings of about 1.8 million within the police division. In addition, replacement tasers and the related supplies, excuse me, for those were originally budgeted in the general fund, but because of our success that you've been very supportive of and a part of and our sales of assets and our fleet assets, we were able to use permanent improvement funds instead of our general fund dollars, which are more precious to us. And that saved us an additional 200,000 within the general fund. The Development Department is the other, one of the other larger departments. Again, we're seeing savings really mainly due to vacancies of about 834,000 within that department. So I, those are really pretty solid savings at this point. It's likely to grow in the second half of the year. Within my own department, the Finance and Management Department, we're seeing overall savings of 1.7 million that we're projecting. And again, as we, as you've mentioned, one of the things that we do, we very carefully manage our vacancy process here at the city and the HR Director as well as myself approve all hires here at the city. So by managing that process and ensuring that we hire only when we need to hire positions, again, we're seeing savings within our own department, within several of the divisions. And then utility cost within the Facilities Management Division are providing savings as well. We continue to monitor that. Our hope is that we see even additional savings in the second half of the year. As you know, again, with really your support, very specifically, all the good things that we've been able to do with greening our buildings and putting in new heating and cooling systems, more efficient systems, lighting systems. We have an energy coordinator that's been on now for a while within the department that's been doing a great job with retrofits of lighting, looking at better ways to purchase our electricity and purchase our natural gas. So we hope to continue to see savings in our utility costs. Finally, in regard to outside of the elected officials, and I'll mention them last because I always like to give all of the elected officials credit for the good things that they're doing. But within the Public Service Department, we're seeing projected savings of 2.2 million, actually higher than the other departments. And again, mainly due to vacancy savings, there is a lot of turnover within the refuse collection division and they're continually hiring new drivers, but that process does take time. And as well as you can imagine, the amount of fuel savings that there are within the refuse division as we're out there on a daily basis going and picking up, which is probably close to, and I'm not the service director, but I think there are around 300,000 households are getting close to that right now that they're picking up. So we're seeing good savings there. And then finally, the elected officials, about $651,000 worth of savings. And again, that's all due to very strictly controlling hiring within all of the offices of the elected officials and making sure that they manage their vacancies so that they can reap the benefits of savings, but also provide the services that are necessary to the citizens of Columbus. And then finally, we have our overtime table for safety. It's where the majority of our overtime outside of probably the refuse collection division within the, within the general fund. We do have an issue with the police civilian, about a $400,000 deficit there. Again, that's our comm tax. As you know, we always have problems with, it's a very stressful job with our keeping full staffing within our call, our 911 center for the vacancies that we have there. And we're running through a lot of classes, larger classes than we have in the past to trying to play catch-up. But as you know, we're also doing mandatory training for that communication center as we get ready to civilianize the fire alarm office, that first big piece of that, which is the call-taking piece of that. So there's been some added expenses there, though I will say that those costs are a lot less than what we projected those costs might be to get that training done. There were some pretty scary numbers as to what we thought that might take, even though we know in the long run that frees up firefighters to go back out onto the street and onto the EMS vehicles and the engines. But we're seeing a lot less cost there than we thought we might see. And then finally, in Fire, we're seeing an overtime issue there that I know that the new chief is looking at very closely. Really, as I mentioned earlier, Fire is a very different animal than Police is in regard to its staffing needs in the three-man platoon system. We have had reduced sworn strength, as I said, because we had more retirements than we thought we were going to have in the first half of the year. So the average strength has been down about 11 positions. So that creates issues in regard to properly staffing and we have to bring folks in because there is minimum staffing levels on all those houses and firehouses and pieces of equipment. So that's driving a big piece of that. In addition, we did reduce the overtime budget in 2015 because we had eight temporary transfer positions that we were going to civilianize. Then those folks would be able to leave those temporary transfers, go back out into the firehouses, which would reduce overtime. We are still working through the civilianization. Those positions have all been approved by the HR Director and by myself to be hired. They're just still working through that hiring process and the civil service process on those positions. And then lastly, if you remember, the division increased the medic units by five in regard to some of the issues in our mutual aid agreements with our townships, especially Franklin Township that were having some issues passing levies. They are not doing this through overtime. They're doing it through normal scheduling, but as you know, when there's a shortage of paramedics, as there are on some of the units, we end up incurring indirectly overtime costs because we're pulling people from other jobs to staff those. So I know the new chief, Chief O'Connor, is looking at all of that and trying to reduce the reliance on overtime, but those are the factors that are driving fires overtime. And with that, I'm done with my piece of the presentation. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Director. Just have a couple, just on the topic of overtime, as you were just sharing. And you were saying that in terms of the uniformed Fire, that we are down 11%. And so just wanting to hear, if you've heard from Chief O'Connor, what, how we're going to cut, how will we resolve this issue of being down 11%?
Unfortunately, one of the problems is that the Fire class has already occurred this year. If we would have known ahead of time that we were going to have a problem with greater retirements than we would have hoped for, we would have been able to add to that class. That class is going to occur early next year. I don't want to speak for the chief. I know he's fairly new to the position and he's looking at all of these issues. But really, it's very difficult when you have those three units to balance the paramedics across the units. You have to do it through temporary transfers. Those last, I think, for about 12 weeks. Though that's one way to do that and I'm sure that he's looking at that and trying to balance all of those force levels for the paramedics across those three units. The other reality is that our runs are up this year. They're up by over 7,000 runs, almost 7,500 runs over last year, year-to-date. So some of this is just the fact that there's a greater need by the community that's out there. So I have a lot of confidence in the new chief to deal with these issues, but it'd probably take a little bit of time. If we need to adjust our next class, we'll adjust our next class accordingly to ensure that we get those strength levels up. And then, as you know, it takes a long time. We include in our count all of our folks that are in the academies in both Police and Fire, but as you know, it takes, it takes time to get out of the academy and then get out there on the street. So we'll be working with safety to do whatever we can to get that number down. I hope when I come to see you and for the third quarter review, that number's down.
But even with the number being down, I mean, being, the number being what it is, it's still that the Safety Division is looking to be under budget by 3.4 million.
Absolutely.
So I think you have to weigh it all. I mean, obviously it would have been more money, but when you take into consideration what you just said about the retirement, and then most importantly, we're up by 7,000 runs, that even with the best planning, that we would have maybe, obviously, there probably would have been still some overtime because we don't control the number of runs that we're going to have.
That's correct.
And so, but again, with all that being said, I still want to just really say have a huge thank you for, to the Safety Division, just because of how they have still been saving money through, through the first, second quarter of this year. And so, the other, only other question I'll ask is around, you said that if we think we need to make any adjustments in the budget, and how would you do that? Because you mentioned in the very beginning of your statement, you said, you know, if I need to make adjustments to the budget, do you foresee yourself having to make any adjustments, especially based upon, I know that the revenues are up in many areas, of course expenditures, you know, the numbers are pretty phenomenal, how you're managing the vacancies and managing, you know, the supplies and expenses of the city. But do you foresee any other adjustments having to be made?
The only, the best way for us to produce savings is by the management of the vacancies that are out there in our hiring cycle. We don't ever want to put a department or a division or an office in a situation where they are not able to provide adequate services to the public. But if you look, and if I can get that, I might be able to get that to come back up, but let's see if I can go. A lot of our savings are generated by vacancy savings. That's where we get a bulk of our savings. So if we were to run into an issue, we would hold off on hiring as long as we could for as many positions as we could. We could also look at the way we're deploying staff in Police and Fire, as well as even my own department over at Fleet, over in refuse and our use of overtime, because we, overtime is controllable unless we have large storms that we can have in the winter and we have folks out that have to do work on cleaning the streets or cleaning up debris when we've had windstorms and all of that. So largely, a lot of what we do is control vacancies. That's probably the best way to make an immediate impact. I don't see us having to do anything differently than we're currently doing that way. And as you know, as we negotiate our contracts, we continue to negotiate contracts with reasonable wage increases and continue our pension reforms and our healthcare reforms where we are lowering the city's pickup of our employees' pension. They're absorbing more of that on their own. And then everyone is paying more each year for their insurance to get that back up to where we believe is more to the, kind of the market standard on those. So all of those efforts combine to control costs.
Thank you, Director. I, at this time, would entertain any public comments and questions, and we don't have any speakers here this evening. And so I just want to, to share that, as I've heard this afternoon, the city's financial position is strong and we will continue to require monitoring by our Finance Department, which are doing, you know, just an amazing job, Director Rakowski. When I think about us having, you know, we're spending 8.9 million less than what was originally appropriated for 2015, that we know that we are, we have, we are meeting the auditor's current estimate. And we also, we have the amazing hiring controls in place. When I think about our staffing, that we are budgeted for all funds, all funds, 1,811, you know, that's what we are budgeted for. We're authorized for 8,283, but we're actually at 7,686. So I think about how you're really managing the staffing, but we're still able to get the work done. And even the discussion we had about Fire, even with that being in play, we are, you know, having more runs, we are, we're still making sure that we're meeting the needs of our whole community by, even though we're managing our vacancies. So I do just really appreciate that. I also want to, you mentioned the ongoing reforms and there's certainly, I appreciate the work that's going on with all the reforms that we committed to our community, but I also want to thank all these departments, well, really all the departments, kind of read the report, pretty much every single department is read the report, pretty much every single department is in, is, I say, is in a positive place in terms of their, their finances. No, everyone is pretty mu, everybody's under budget, which is great, and so I want to congratulate the administration for that. But I have to say, again, thank, special thank yous to the safety department, to the, and of course, you listed all the different areas in which, how they're saving money, the department of development, to your department, finance and management and facilities, public service, of course, the elected officials, because those, those, all those departments certainly are, are why we are at, in the position that we are in terms of looking at our expenditures, and of course, with the increase in our income tax, which we're happy to, to see that number being higher. I know when we were in the first quarter review, we, you know, we weren't smiling as much as we are today in regards to where we are with our income tax. So I'm really happy that that's happened, and I have to say, really, a thank you, you know, to the development department, because I know they work really hard into making sure that we attract and retain businesses within the city of Columbus, which helps with the income tax. So, so I'm really pleased with this report, just pleased with, you know, revenues are up 3.8% above last year, and so just very pleased with the report that you presented. I hope that we will continue to have the, the savings, have the dollars coming into our local, our income tax and any of the other funds, even the casino fund was up now, so I'm happy to hear that. So just real pleased with the report. I think we're on the, we are on the right track and looking forward to having the, the necessary dollars to, as we plan for the 2016 budget. So I thank you for sharing this, and you're doing a great job, so thank you.
And Councilwoman Tyson, I would just add that we're really good at crisis management because we had to be good at that, but as you know, because you've been a big part of all the good things that we've done around here, we prefer to take the long-term look, and that's why we're working on all the reforms and that we're working on getting our pension costs and healthcare costs under control in a systematic, long-term effort, because you know, we bargain with our unions in good faith, and they've been cooperating with us to get those costs under control. It's the greening of the city's fleet, it's the CNG stations that we're building and getting off of the reliance on diesel and unleaded gasoline. It's downsizing the fleet, getting rid of vehicles that we don't need to have in the fleet, making sure that our equipment is newer equipment that's within the replacement schedule, so our fire apparatus and our, our police cruisers are, are in good shape so we're not spending more on maintenance that we should spend. So these are all, I prefer to take that long-term approach of management to control the growth in our costs and reduce our costs and, so that we hopefully can avoid being in that crisis situation, though if we are, well, you know, we'll deal with that. But I think that, under your leadership and council and the mayor, that we've taken a longer view and we've done those good things that will keep us moving forward long into the future.
Well, thank you, Director, and this will conclude our hearing today, and just appreciate you and what you're doing and your team, because I know you don't do it by yourself. You have a fabulous team that you work with, and we appreciate working with them. I also want to always thank the auditor for the work that he does for our city and my fellow council members and their staffs, who really work hard to serve our community with pride each and every day. I want to thank the legislative research office, especially Tom Diamond, who staffs Health and Human Services, and Workforce Development, and Kate Pashati, who staffs Finance Committee. Also, my staff, Nicole Harper and James Lewis, who are just really hardworking, and I just appreciate them, and then the hard-working team of CTV, who make these hearings possible. And lastly, I just want to thank the residents for allowing us this opportunity to be able to serve you and to know that we want to make sure that our city is the best place in the country to live, work, and to raise a family, and we all do it together. And with that, the hearing is adjourned. Thank you.